It's thirty.
Yep. The recording has started.
Okay. Good evening. It is six thirty on November twenty ninth. This is the Enfield Planning Board and we are meeting at the DPW facility. And also on teams, except there's no guests on.
Nobody on our team.
At least not yet. So I'm calling the meeting to order and members present right by my left, starting with Linda.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Giley.
I'm David Frack.
I'm Phil Ramirez.
Brad Rich.
Craig Conharts.
Jim Bonner.
Staff members.
Rob Taylor.
Okay, that's who we have here. Uh, nobody from the public, so they don't get to comment. Uh, Mr. Ramirez is not here again.
That's correct. I did correspond with him today, so see if he was coming, but he said it's unlikely that we'll see him today because his father's in the hospital with heart troubles.
Still be it.
We may see him next time.
Fortunately, it's not a official warrant public hearing because it's a voluntary merger of two lots, which basically requires the applicant to show up, tell us what he's doing, and then we give him our blessing because we can't say no. So no conceptuals. Um, let's get on to Eric with the select board report.
All right. Um, in our last meeting, the big item was a public hearing about uh the purchase of a new tanker pumper truck to replace engine five and the tanker. Have to take those two trucks and replace them with one truck. And after a lot of um discussion input, there's a lot of reasons to do it. It was voted to move ahead with it using the CIP funds on a three-year plan to do it. And um other than that, let's see, Whitney Hall groundbreaking is in two weeks, probably. Right there on, there's still a target to set that in two weeks, which will be exciting. There'll be some sort of a little celebration about two weeks from now. We get it going, but everybody in town offices are busy moving over to La Salle. Um, Shed Street, the demolition has started, uh, so that is excellent. Um, and then uh, the community nurse committee, we formally they have raised the money and the contract for the first year, if it's not in place, it's already negotiated. So we're now formally putting together that community nursing committee. And that is about it.
Okay, are you Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, Mr. Ramirez, Randy Ramirez.
Okay.
No, 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 demers.
Demers, I'm sorry.
It's uh, somebody here for public comment, actually.
All right.
If you want to jump to.
Let's um, let's finish the reports and then go back to public comment.
Okay.
Okay. Um legislative report, the legislature is not in session. It's December almost.
All as well.
They're all as well.
They couldn't spend any money.
There are over eight hundred bills that have been submitted for the twenty twenty four session. That looks exciting. Um this month, basically, or actually December is going to be filled with uh caucuses, continuing education trainings, Christmas parties, et cetera. So that's basically all there is on the legislative front. Uh, Rob.
Uh, let's see, so I told you guys about my going to the uh conference at uh Linderhanscher Planners.
Yeah.
Um, that was uh, that was excellent. I do actually have another conference coming up. That's more of like an annual meeting for the planners association. I'll be down in Manchester. I go to that every year as well. There'll be some really good sessions going on with that. Um, it actually has been fairly busy. I mean, we had a couple of days off last week, so it was closed and we did have a lot of people out on vacation during the last week. But uh, there's been, there's been a fair amount of real estate stuff happening. I've had a couple of transactions. People have bought land at a good meeting yesterday with somebody that you'll probably be seeing at some point uh bought a property on Stevens Street and uh are already real interested in making multifamily housing in that location. Um, uh, they're also interested in perhaps a subdivision. Um, I was talking to Dan, stopped by today. Uh, the one thing that sort of came out of the discussion I had with these nice folks yesterday was we did all that work this year on changing our zoning as far as the acreage goes in the R one, but we did not touch this frontage requirements. And that's a sort of, I think that's maybe a weakness that we can look at as we start doing some work on our zoning ordinance for the future. Um, right now, obviously, it's the R one is still required a hundred feet of attention minimum. So if you want to.
No, seventy-five, we changed that.
Subdivide.
That's it. Seventy-five, we changed that. We made that change because it didn't make any sense.
Did we change it this year?
We changed it, yes.
Yes. I'm gonna think of it. I even think of that today.
We said although it didn't make sense, you gotta turn all the houses sideways in order.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because if you've got, if you've got half an acre, you would, you had to have hu- two hundred feet of frontage in order to subdivide it.
Right.
So, so it's down to one fifty then.
Must have been looking at an old copy of our.
Could be, yeah.
Well, again, something that will obviously come up, I think, at some point.
It may help it.
Yeah. Um, but there, like I said, real estate, there's a couple of lots uh for sale down on Bog Road. Um, there's been people calling me, wondering if they can do multifamily in the R five. Uh, like I don't uh, you know, they were asking if they could do zoning variances and, you know.
You can always.
I said, you could, you could try. I said, it.
Right.
We'll see, I mean, but there, I mean, right now is sort of people kind of kicking tires, I think, a lot for future, you know, so um, it's gonna, stuff happening on Sugar Boulevard, people calling me and asking me what possibilities are doing down there. Building inspector was off last week, so he's been fairly busy catching up this week with regard to uh projects. Got a couple of COs that need to be issued. And um, as I said, projects are popping for him. Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled next week for the TIF committee. I'm happy to report that the TIF committee is now complete with five members. We did appoint um a new member, Bobby Lines, who is the owner of uh the Enfield Garage property. She runs the North Country Medical Courier business. She's super. Um, I'm actually going to be meeting with her next week to help kind of bring her up to speed on TIF. She's still, you know, getting familiarized with that whole concept and some of the stuff we've done so far, some of the stuff that we're contemplating. So she's uh excited to be coming on board. We're excited to have her, that's, you know, a very successful business person in town. She's got the medical courier business. She rents a couple of suites. She's got Revision Energy and the Enfield Airport in the same building. She actually lives upstairs. She has an apartment upstairs in that building. She's kind of a part-time resident, but she's, she's fantastic. Uh, let's see. Uh, I helped out yesterday uh with some of the work for prepping the La Salle facility uh for the big move that Eric mentioned. That's obviously not so much here because we're, we're all sat here, but downtown. Everybody down there is in sort of a major state of disruption with boxing up all their stuff and getting ready to move. I think it's actually very healthy, though, to do that kind of thing because they're, they're, they've been finding stuff that no reason to keep. And they've been able to chuck a bunch of stuff. Some of the stuff's come down here. This probably belongs with you, you know, and they handed to me, so we put some stuff upstairs. Um, I will say, uh, we'll see what you guys think as winter progresses. We just had a big project done here. The uh envelope of this building has now been insulated by Chai insulation. Uh, and then when I say envelope, it's, it's the outer walls. Would surprise you, maybe doesn't surprise you, that in this building, if you went upstairs in the attic and you looked down between the sheet rock and the exterior of this building, there was no insulation. And we, in the offices where I am and, and others are on the front of building, it was not uncommon in the winter to look down and see frost on the sheet rock. So.
Great foam insulation?
They did it with the uh.
Blowing?
Blowing cellulose that, that they could, they take like a bale and they put it in this special machine. And it was quite a process. That company Chai out of Canaan is pretty impressive. They did some serious work. We still have weakness straight up because this drop ceiling is all that's between us and the attic upstairs, mezzanine. And the only insulation at the very top is what they call bag and sag. It's like a, it's almost like a blanket that's built into the steel structure underneath the roof. And that's not very sufficient, especially because the way that it, it does sag and then it goes up to where the pearlins are and then drops again.
How could a building have been built without insulation of the outer walls?
I've been told that the history there was that they tried to build this building a couple of times and it kept getting uh turned down by the town.
The budget was a million dollars.
And, and they said, you gotta cut, you gotta cut, you gotta cut.
When we were doing the, the impact, the story was that they got an estimate of one point four million, but then put forth a bond of one million.
Right.
And so then they built the one million dollar.
But how's that get by the building inspector?
That's a good question. That was twenty years ago. I think it's exactly twenty years ago, so I don't know.
Is Enfield required? Uh, is, is insulation required?
Oh, let me tell you. It is now.
Absolutely.
Today, it is now.
Not only is it required, but depending on what kind you use, the number of inches in our value, because I had an issue with.
Oh, yeah.
And I was not happy with.
And that's, I mean, I think that's, that's, it's even as we speak, getting more and more aggressive.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
A new requirement on a single-family home is they found that the studs, you know, that you have two studs and they put the insulation between, well, they found that those studs are huge.
Where heat's the size.
And so now, when you build a, a new home, the outer sheathing has to have, it's like a minimum of an inch. There's a special kind of foam board they use now on the exterior and there's a special type of tape that they tape those seams and.
And to attach the siding to foam.
It is, yes. Yeah, there's, they have to use these long screws or long nails to get to the studs.
Which radiate heat.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But so that is, I mean, that's a big part, and it's a big part of an expense for building a home now. You can see why it's getting so expensive to build that we do require, it's, it's not.
I was not a happy camper that day.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it cost me thirty-six hundred dollars more.
Yeah, oh, yeah. On a, on an average, single-family home, it could be up to seven or eight thousand dollars more with this new requirement for the exterior insulation sheathing on the outside.
Yeah, this, this was a small building and it was uh sixteen thousand dollars insulation.
Yep.
Small building.
So we did this work in the, in the exterior. They also did rock wool. It was actually glued to the concrete block walls on the outside of the office. So we think that's going to help us a lot. Um, and then when, someday, you know, in the next ten to twenty years, when they do a new roof up above here, that they will actually put insulation up, you know, basically on top of the roof and then put a new roof on top of the insulation. So that will hopefully capture a lot. But if you go up into our attic here, this mezzanine, which we use for storage, there's a sign, storage for all the signs that we keep for the DPW and the planning files. It's nice and warm up there. So all this heat's just going straight up here. And uh, so, but that's, that was a good project to get done. It was, you know, done with supervision of the um energy committee and the um, there's like a safety committee that runs some of the stuff that we do that makes recommendations. I thought that was good uh for that. Um, just looking through, that's about it for today to tell you about. Oh, ZBA has found a new alternate member that has been appointed. I don't know if I reported that to you guys, a guy named Dan Regan, who lives on Crystal Lake. He's on Crystal Lake Road and he is uh fantastic. He's uh agreed to become an alternate. The alternate members are appointed by the ZBA themselves because the ZBA is an elected body. And so he read one of my newsletter articles and decided to go ahead and sign up. And uh, he came to a meeting. He's filled out all the requisite forms and everything and uh he is now an official member of the ZBA as an alternate member. So we're very excited to have him on and I've gotten him a, one of those handbooks for the ZBA with all the regs in there. He's uh very interested in, you know, learning more and so we're going to give him as much training as he needs and he'll hit the ground running. And of course, you know, it's a great way to come on board of the ZBAs to be an alternate, so you can kind of do a lot of listening to start with, and that's what he's planning to do. Um, and he and his wife were uh seasonal residents of NPO, but now they're permanent. They built a beautiful home on Crystal Lake. Um, so that's about it for me right now.
All right, let's circle back to public comment.
Okay.
Identify yourself, please.
Yeah, sure. My name is Randy DeMers. I came to Enfield, New Hampshire in nineteen ninety-nine. And um, we grew up in Norwich, local area, and then bought a home here and uh currently um working on my home and renovating it. Some of you might have remembered me that I had to move my house four feet away from the right way of the road. And I want to thank you for your cooperation for that. I thought it was a very expensive undertaking and I thought it was going to foreclose on the place. So it cost me a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and it's now paid for and done it in the past. And I'm here today to discuss the same residence. I don't actually know about it, but if I could just stand up and walk I could pass this one around, this one copy around, and then hold up the other copy of the photo. I didn't realize it was many people here. So that was three or four people, but this is my home. This is my residence. And uh, what I'm, what I'm interested in is um, this is a beautiful spot deck here. And if you look at the two back pages, this is it. Um this is um.
Let's see, address, can pull it up on the.
Number forty-eight four A.
Forty-four.
So this is the backyard there.
Okay.
As of two o'clock in the afternoon today.
Yeah.
And this is the road I put to walk in there to make it accessible.
Yes, I know.
And um, if you want to pass that around.
I know.
So under today's ordinances and restrictions, I can only put a garage up there. And I could never, whether it was an RV or a dwelling, I can never spend a night up there in a dwelling. So I wouldn't mind, I would like to, um, an RV, I can understand conversations through Rob that which is very restricted and I wouldn't want to go down that avenue uh when a family come, whether I put a sewer, a sewer or electrical or plumbing up there, but I would not mind a dwelling up there, a garage with an apartment on top or a dwelling. Um, it's a good-sized lot. Um, I am down below. It's beautiful, but to put a garage up there with a walk up and down that hill doesn't appeal to me. A garage with an apartment up top would appeal to me. And I know we're in a housing crisis and your ordinances do say one substructure, one superstructure for a lot. And I know um, if I, if with the changing of the ordinances, maybe they have to be considered to have two sub, two superstructures for a lot.
I don't see where the second superstructure is coming in. You're talking about a garage with an apartment over.
If you look at the photo.
Yeah.
I live down below.
Right, right.
And it, and that is awfully cramped. In fact, it was so cramped that I had to get a variance to move it away from the road because it ended up on the well or it ended up on the embankment on today's ordinance. So the, your people approved me just moving up and down four feet.
Right.
And um, the, the yard that's there now, you know, when you go outside, it's very small and very limited. You literally walk up. And I would like um to be able to use that spot up top other than a garage or parking boats or cars or um recreational equipment as a dwelling.
Well, I mean, ADU.
ADU.
Well, an ADU is eight hundred square feet.
Right.
That doesn't appeal to me. That, you know, that's not much bigger than this room. I'd like to retire. I'd like thirteen hundred square, I'd like something that, I'm currently in a duplex now. The one that's down below is thirteen hundred and the other one is eleven hundred. So that, that is my, that is my superstructure on the property now.
How big is the lot at this point?
Three quarters of an acre.
And you're in R one?
Yes.
That's an absolute.
And no sewer.
City sewer.
You do.
I have a city sewer and my own well.
Okay.
Yeah.
That changes the equation in your favor.
Yeah. This is getting into the principal dwelling. That's what he's talking about. When he's talking about superstructure, it's principal dwelling.
Okay.
So we can only have one principal dwelling.
Principal build.
Principal building.
But he could subdivide.
I just found that out. We looked at that. Your, the subdivision was a hundred.
He's over half an acre.
Yeah, the subdivision we found out.
I've got a hundred foot of frontage, so he's got a hundred feet.
Yes, I do, that he doesn't have two seventy-fives. So it could subdivide.
Well, not according to current.
Not according, wasn't it seventy-five or is it a hundred? A hundred?
Seventy-five. Seventy-five. Seventy-five.
It's seventy-five now.
So you need, you need a hundred fifty feet of frontage to start with.
So therefore about.
Or a variance. Or a variance.
And a variance, I don't want to go through. That went through to move the building and that was a tremendous challenge.
Mm-hmm. I, I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
But I just, hopefully, using, you know, our regs as they stand today, I think your variance is your only option other than an eight hundred square foot ADU.
But he can't use ADU because it's a duplex.
A duplex.
Okay.
So I had encouraged him to come. I mean, I told him that it's a very unique opportunity as we're at the very beginning of a process of doing some zoning.
Right.
Changing. And I, I think it's good for.
And if you look at their photos.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful lot. It's a beautiful space. If I put a garage there, um, you know, to put a garage there is, is, you know, would be a shame. Yeah.
How quickly are you wanting to move?
Um, I'm sixty, you know, I'm not looking, I'm looking for maybe it makes five years.
Oh.
So I'm not looking to go, I'm not looking for permit within the near future.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But it is something that um, you know, that I use. I mean, but uh, it would, it would be nice, you know, to legally spend the night there within, within ordinances, but right now it's just a parking spot with a beautiful view.
Mm-hmm.
We also have discussed, he's, he was asking about using a camper. And I told him, you know, that's obviously limited in current zoning is that he's only has, because it's an occupied lot, he's got three weeks.
Right, right.
Of the use of a camper every, you know, somebody to come visit, basically.
Right.
So.
What we have years in it, the real-time example of what our zoning uh needs to consider, situation like this, is there a way that we could craft a new zoning ordinance for him to do what he wants?
This spot right here. And this is me. Well, this is the spot right here. All of this is currently used and all of this is just, I just mow the grass there and park boats there. And it's elevated maybe twenty-two feet above this.
Right.
And then, so um, I put in an access road here, a retaining wall, the shoulder that you see in the photo, but you know, if I could put a second structure here, other than the eight, you know, the E D U, the eight hundred, you know.
Right.
So that's, that's my comment today, you know.
Yeah.
Take that into consideration.
So my suggestion to you, since we are going to be doing an extensive rewrite of our zoning ordinances in the next eight or nine months, um, there will be a series of public meetings where people can come and express their needs, what they don't like, and I would encourage you to come to one or more of those meetings and express yourself there in a public meeting. And with luck, um, we'll make some changes that would not be adopted until March twenty twenty-five, uh, town meeting. Um, but that seems to kind of fit with your schedule.
That would work for me. I'm in no hurry.
Yeah.
You know, I, something I think about when I sleep at night or come out in the mornings, which is something I think about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that would work for me, you know, and I've got things to do there, you know, I've got plenty to do there, but um thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. How do you do?
Keep involved here. We'll, I'll communicate with you.
Yeah, I'll be in. Yeah, I'll be in. No, actually, just keep them passing around. It's the back two pages that appeal to me.
Yep.
The back two photos as of this afternoon.
We really appreciate you coming down too.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So I just want to note for the minutes that Tim Jennings joined us at approximately eight thirty-seven.
Or six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven.
I hope, I hope it wasn't.
I just thought it was different times.
That, that was, that is a good, I'm glad we saw a real time.
Yeah.
There's an issue here. You know, we made it, we made it available for people to subdivide, but to put more structures, but he can't subdivide because he doesn't have frontage.
Yep.
Where on Route four A, fifty feet of frontage is not out of the
Right.
Out of the rubble, real possibility.
It's more common.
Right, exactly.
But he subdivided that in half, have a quarter acre, make a quarter acre lot in the back and then get a right of way.
Well, we have to reallow back lots.
Right.
We don't currently allow that. State law doesn't allow.
Right.
State doesn't allow.
That's right, it was the state that changed.
Yeah.
Right, you've got to have the frontage, back to frontage now.
How much frontage do you need? Seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five?
Yep.
In the R one. So you need a hundred and fifty in order to subdivide.
Right.
Yep. Is that state law in terms of DOT regulation?
No, no, it's, it's state law because they, they get, they wanted, they don't like backlots. State doesn't like backlots because nobody really has, because then you're running into rights of way. And rights of way become an issue when people sell their property.
Yeah, and don't maintain it.
And don't maintain the right of way.
It was basically a safety issue because right of ways weren't being, weren't being maintained.
Right.
So, moving on, um, let's look at the November fifteenth minutes. I have a comment at line forty-seven. The state of Vermont did not actually attend the function. It was legislators or Vermont State legislators
Yeah.
who were in attendance.
Yeah.
And let me see if I have anything else. Um I, line one twenty-seven, contracts is underway with resilience and is anticipated to be put on the select board agenda. Um, that's not quite accurate because, it is accurate?
No.
No, it's not.
Agreed with you.
It's not. Um, basically, the uh, the reason that I went to the select board was to get them to authorize the town manager to reallocate the money for the HOP grant and master planning to a different contractor. And we told them that we were in negotiation with resilience. We thought that they authored us um the best alternative at this point in time. And we also, we also said that they um were one of the finalists in the uh master plan chapter, first set of chapters. Um, and we had a hard time deciding between them and PlaySense. That time PlaySense got it. And we also told the select board that um resilience in our discussions had talked about combining some of the public input uh of both contracts to um essentially get people while they're out and talking. So after a small amount of discussion, the select board voted to uh authorize the town manager to enter into contracts. That's about it. So how, how are we going to change one twenty-seven to reflect um what actually happened? Anybody have any wordsmithing suggestions?
Well, instead of changing those words, just start over and say the select board that you visited the select board and they approved.
Yeah, well, that didn't happen at the meeting.
At that time, I had not gone to the select board.
But we, we didn't say it went to the select, we're saying we're anticipating it.
We're anticipating.
But it didn't, so that's legal, that's, that's proper.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with the minutes really.
We anticipated it, but it didn't happen. Okay?
Well, it did happen. It did, it did happen.
But it didn't, it didn't.
But it didn't, it didn't get put on the agenda.
On the select board agenda.
And it got added.
The, 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 the issue Phil is that at the time of the meeting, of our meeting. Um, there was no serious contract that had been drawn up yet because we had just talked with them.
Okay.
That morning.
Would you say discussions with?
Contract just put discussions is underway with resilience.
Okay.
That works.
That works. Good work.
Good work Brad.
That's why we bring you here.
Alright, anybody else have any comments or corrections on the meeting? Uh, minutes of November.
I make a motion if we accept the minutes uh, with your change.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Was I sitting on that one or not?
No.
Uh, we're not because we just have an hearing abstaining. Uh, you're not sitting on this one either because we don't have any hearings. Okay. So you can't vote. Well, I can't go voting, yeah, but. Anyways. Okay. Um, new business, we don't have any continuing business. Um, zoning ordinance rewrite project update. Rob, fill us in.
Well, you, you gave a pretty good synopsis there. I think that the getting the select board blessing to, uh. Move to a new contractor is good. We do have a. Draft of a contract for the master plan work. He's working now on the draft of a contract for the HOP grants. Um, I have shared with him the paperwork that we had from uh, PlaySense. And the paperwork that we had from the actual grant application and our sort of narrative and our matrix. And uh, shared it as a editable file. So he, he's very much aware of what we have available. And he's working on that to come to us. The plan is, as you guys know. The kickoff meeting for them, I think is twenty seventh.
Yeah.
December.
Second meeting in December.
Yeah.
Where he would have a zoning review on it.
I did share, I did share with him the document that I shared with you guys at the last meeting. Some of my thoughts with some, some, some of Jim's as well kicked in there. I was like, my early thoughts, I think it was the name of the document.
Uh, they asked for that.
Yeah, he was, he was very happy to get that. Um, it was very interesting, you know, the conversation with him. Uh, was very much like, this is sort of exactly what we see every other town that we're working in, basically. It's a. Very sort of universal issues with regard to zoning and housing and everything, so. And as I said to you, I think at the, the last meeting, I've been impressed with the correspondence from him. I've corresponded more with, with him in the last. Two weeks than six months before with the other contractors, so that's. Uh, I think very encouraging. I think, I think we'll be impressed with this firm. Uh, I'm already impressed with him and I've seen him at all kinds of different shows and conferences and so forth and. I'm impressed with the product. I don't know if anybody's had a sec to go onto his website and look at some of his work samples.
It's awesome. Those guys. They are highly experienced at this guy's stuff. These guys are top tier.
They are. Yeah, we'll have a contract in two weeks.
I, I, I believe so. He's, he's worked, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's the bottom line is we need the contract.
Yep, we need two contracts.
Well, yeah, but we need them locked in.
Yeah.
Yeah, my communications, I mean, I communicated a little bit with David. Um, you know, some of the early feedback that we had from the master planning stuff was. Uh, I think David, we, we were worried, worried that we needed more. Community engagements, stuff in there. But as I've said to him, I mean, if, if he's trying to come in, he's trying to come in with what our budget is.
Yeah.
And that's the hard thing to do for him is to sort of figure it out. But I've communicated that, you know. We have a great group here. We had a great master planning task force. And that we can supplement with our crew. As needed, I think that's the kind of key. I mean, we'll get as much out of him as we can.
Right.
And that's going to be our goal is to squeeze it out of him. And he's, you know, he's, he's coming at us with the mindset of. Uh, doing some combining of the two projects, because it does make sense. If you're going to have a good room full of people, why not ask them all the questions, you know, just some of the questions. And so he's, he's working on it.
As long as he understands that the HOP is his first and.
He does, he does. Right, yeah, in fact, you know, he's got, I think at least a couple more, maybe three or four more towns he's working on right now on HOP grants too, so he's. Intimately aware with deadlines.
A lot of the stuff he's doing is cookie cutter town to town.
Yeah.
And the other guy that's, that's with him and I think he'll be super impressed with, with Mark as well. You know.
There, there was a, a deliverable, uh, the audit, I think.
Twenty seven.
Yeah, I think they're working on it now. I mean, like I said, I've actually given him the stuff that we had. He's got copies of everything that we got, you know, I mean, obviously our zoning ordinances and, um, he wanted, um.
Could we just make it very clear that that's what we're expecting for the twenty seven?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Cause if, if, if we got the audit, a legitimate audit on the twenty seven, that'll kickstart things really quickly.
Big time, yeah. You got a month, I mean.
Yeah.
Yesterday was the twenty eighth, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Question.
Linda.
Do we also still have the option of using the woman who was up to us on the owl?
Robin.
Robin.
I don't think there's any plan to use her now, I mean, uh.
That was between her and Brandy.
Brandy's sub.
Yeah. They're gonna bring, they're, they're gonna have their own.
They have, yeah, they have their own. It's an extensive staff.
Yeah.
Six or seven people.
So they have people who can do.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
I thought I heard you say that we'd have to do that.
Well, the terms of the contract and the, and the, and the budget and all that kind of stuff that we, we will definitely want to do some of that stuff, I think. For us to sit on our hands and expect they're going to do all the work, that's not going to happen. I mean, we, we've got to be part of, we've got to be proactive, I think.
Well, we did the same thing with Brandy.
We did, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, David ran all the sessions.
Educational sessions we did, uh, the focus groups.
Yep.
We did, she was there, but we did it.
David and Lindsay ran them.
Lindsay ran them, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't give me credit on that.
No, you were, you were there.
I was there, but Lindsay was the one who did most of the organizing and did planning for those.
Yeah. Went well.
It did, in the middle of COVID.
Yeah.
Dan and I, we had, we had a great conversation today. Dan dropped by in the office and. I'm really interested, as I look at the, the, the future here. And there's a great article we were talking about before the meeting, in the paper today about Sunape and Lake Sunape. The, the association, it's called the Lake Sunape Protective Association. Has done this incredible work on Lake Sunape where they have not, they have not had a cyanobacteria bloom there in like two or three years.
Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen was their last.
Four years. So, uh, and, you know, I'm looking to, to them as, to, as an example of the kind of stuff and we see stuff that's coming from D E S.
Right.
They're, they're going to get more aggressive because it was, it was a bad summer for a lot of lakes and lake towns. Not, not the least of which was us. We had a terrible summer and it was rough.
Terrible fall. And it wasn't internal, but the state one legislature. Set D E S out and said, you gotta do something about the, the cyanobacteria on our lakes because tourism is one of our biggest.
Well, the, the.
Body makers.
The, the issue that affected Masscoma was different than the issue that affected Crystal. Crystal bloom came from the two giant storms where all the storm runoff just came down and flooded the lake.
Right.
I think I told you last time, this much gook.
Right.
Grease, that goose grease in front of my house, um, that will, will not go away. And it'll affect everything and, uh, so two different issues, uh, same result. Yep, I think, uh, you know, in our future, we're definitely going to work with her. We have two really active lake associations.
Yes, very.
And, uh, as Dan and I were talking about, it's, it's not us pushing stuff to them, we want it.
We want them, we want to set it up with them and say, what do you want to do with the lake?
Yeah, what do you think's going to solve this problem? We know we got a problem.
Well, education is number one.
Yep.
You've got to do enforcement where you can and, and the third thing is you've got to have a watershed plan that's not three years away.
Yeah, right.
You've got to have a watershed plan that is happening now and the last time we addressed the select board. I addressed the select board, no offense.
Yeah.
Crickets. And who's crickets?
Yeah.
And the lake, the, the two lakes are in trouble and you've got to fix the watershed.
Yeah.
And that's a long-term project and it can't be three years away or else these lakes are going to.
Yeah. Well. But I think planning and zoning can certainly make a big, big difference too.
I do too, I do too. You know, ninety nine percent of the people that, that live on the lake, they want more regulations, you know. It's, it's the one percent that fertilizes their lawn.
And sprays herb side.
Side and doesn't get their septic pumped.
Right. Which is crazy.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Dan Reagan, I had a nice chat with him. He's very passionate. And he's, you know, the thing he identified and it was in the article today about Sunape was pet waste.
Yeah.
Is a huge problem. There's just, I mean, we see it on the rail trail, we see it at our parks. It's, it's, it's a problem.
Anyway.
Yeah.
We digress.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, last week or two weeks ago. We had what I thought was a really good discussion, starting on some. Light touch zoning and exclusionary or rather in, no. Exclusionary rather than inclusionary zoning. And I think I'd like to continue those two topics and maybe flesh them out a little bit more.
Yeah.
Again, ten thousand foot view.
Right, can we get a, a definition again, um, of what light touch, um, is?
Yeah, so, um, that's, it's sort of a hot trending topic. And that is the eight, like an A D U is, is a light touch.
Yeah.
Where you can drive by a property, look at it and say, is there an A D U there? I don't know. And we do have a lot of those properties I think already in town. I mean, you can drive through the village of Enfield. So I mean, there's a lot of multifamily apartment buildings right down there that you're like. Just like, but like big houses, you know? So that's, that's one of those things and it's, it's interesting. One of the conferences I went to. Couple of months ago now, was this guy was kind of like the guru of the whole country and he's based in a think tank in Washington DC. Talking about housing. And you know, he explained and it's, it's really interesting. If you really dive in deep, sort of the history of zoning. A lot of it was kind of bad, you know, it was, it was, there was racism at play, the redlining. They were trying to keep people out, stop people from building. It was, you know, certain class warfare, like I said, racist stuff. And so, um, you know, that's sort of where we sort of originate with our zoning in the country. And so, you know, he was talking about that, it's like, that's a legacy that we really still need to sort of overcome as a country. But you know, he was like, what is, what's the harm in letting somebody build an apartment in their house? Really, I mean, and so what's the harm in letting them build a ten thousand or a thousand square foot apartment as opposed to an eight hundred? It's like this guy was just saying, he was just here, is really, I mean, what's it to us? Who, who, who's going to really, I mean, that to me is a light touch.
Now.
The difference between eight hundred and a thousand. I mean, and most people that come in are like eight hundred square feet, ah, I don't know if I can do that. You know, that's not going to be comfortable for my family to live in, you know, that kind of thing. So those are some of those things, I think that. It's not a, it's not, it's not real skin off our chin, you know, to be able to change the rules to allow that. You're still going to drive around, you're going to look at it and say, there's a house there. Who cares how many square foot the apartment is inside of it, right? That's light touch.
Yeah.
As I would define it. And then there's other things, I mean, like I said, multifamily.
Right.
The, uh, the second building in the back, you know, the cottage in the back.
Yeah, zoning was, zoning was based on density.
Yeah.
We don't want density. We, we want five acre, you know, it's like.
That's right.
Town north of us that says you can't build unless you've got a five acre lot.
Yes.
Or fifty acre lot in line is fifty acre zoning in some ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd just like to point out.
Yeah.
Is this example of tonight. I think is a really timely one, um. Because we all kind of rallied around the notion that our zoning ordinance says. One principal building per, per lot.
Right.
And did we not just have an argument about that probably four or five months ago?
Yep.
Uh, regarding a, a much larger development that was conceptually proposed to us.
Right.
So I guess I'm just suggesting we need to decide with. Is that what it says? One building per lot or not? So we don't have to do that tonight, but that will come up in the near future.
When we talk, yeah, absolutely, when we, when we redo the zoning, for sure.
Uh, prior, uh, prior to that.
Well, do we need to fix it for March of this year?
Or is a project going to be presented to us before then and we need to tell the developer now. That this is what the zoning ordinance says.
Right.
If you allow more, if more than one building is allowed, that gentleman doesn't have a problem.
No, right. No. No.
And personally, I don't think it, we, we should restrict it that way.
Right, whatever you want to build. Right.
And I, I've been always a proponent of. You know, we couldn't get beyond the eight hundred square foot. I've made an attempt to do away with that figure and decided for whatever reason we didn't. Last year. Um, we could amend that, it's a simple thing to do for this coming town meeting. We could. Um, one thing that, but related to that on A D Us that, that I brought up like a couple of meetings ago was. The, um. I, I, I think most, most neighbors in a neighborhood would be interested in not having. A really, really ugly A D U plopped in on a, where you drive by and you could definitely tell that that isn't. Not a house.
Yeah.
Or it's not part of that. Had an interesting article come across my desk this morning. It was a, uh, it was about. Uh, and. Uh, the H U D, um. Uh, building codes, you applied to A D Us in order to increase housing density. Basically what they pointed out was that manufactured homes are under a different building code than most other. Homes are. And then so it dawned on me that, well, gosh, maybe all we need to say is that. Uh, all A D Us need to meet the same building code as the principal structure of the house. And then we'd get away from the aesthetic part of it altogether. So if they have to meet the codes, the same codes that the house would have to meet, then, um. Essentially, you, you, you include the use of a, say a single wide mobile home slid in a lot next to your neighbor. That's a very creative way of addressing the issue, I think.
Is that, is that more restrictive than the state law? Cause the state law says you have the, you have, you have the, a right to A D U, right?
Yeah, the state, the state law is, is silent on.
Right, on the aesthetic piece, okay.
I think though, I mean, I, I, we talked about this at the last meeting, I think the light touch concept is. Don't, don't worry so much about it because it really has not. I mean, since the A D U went into effect, have you seen anybody pulling a trailer in? And it's been, in fact, now for close to ten years, right? I mean, was Enfield the first one to, one of the first in the state to allow us?
It's probably been four or five.
Yeah, yeah.
Since, since the state adopted it, but when, when did Enfield?
No, no, we, we.
Do it before then.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, Plainfield did. We, we let them go.
We did it. Well, yeah, we did it once, we did it the year before the state.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree that the light touch would be not to worry about it. The, the slightly, slightly more pressured touch would be to. To say that the, the, the structure needs to meet the codes.
Needs to be, that needs to be the building, the building codes for residents.
Then you, you completely leave it up to the, the owner of the property and.
And the.
Designer. Can, can you get some reaction from Liam?
I will, absolutely.
On the issue?
Yeah, yeah. I'm familiar, I mean, I, I put up a modular home and modular, the modular is also regulated by the, by the, um. Basically, the, the factories that build modular.
basically the the factories that build modular realize that they have to basically bill to the highest code. Cause they're gonna be selling homes in fifteen or twenty different states, right? So you know, you go into my master bedroom closet and there's a, this this home meets the HUD code or whatever it is, but.
Sometimes building inspectors will actually go to the factory.
I think the other thing that's obviously at play here is property values. That's just, I mean, and and feel that we just did in Plainfield, the new revale, we're coming up on a revale in Enfield in the next twelve months. The values are just, I I you can't even believe it. And that's gonna happen here when people are gonna be shocked when they see what their new home value is.
Well, that doesn't necessarily translate into your taxes going.
It doesn't, but it's it's definitely a sticker shock for a lot of people.
You get your revale before you get your tax bill.
It's all relative.
Yeah, I agree.
I call it first world problems though. It's like, oh my god, my house is worth a million dollars. Oh dang, you know?
So um, we we've got sort of our definition of light touch. And we've talked a little bit tonight about how we might apply it to ADUs. How might we apply light touch to commercial buildings, for example?
Like White River has, um, or they have many more zones. But where there were architectural, um, I went to a day-long seminar over there for them explaining what they did and how they did it. And when the little shop had some fancy glass windows up above the doors, they were allowed to modernize and extend, but leaving the architectural details on the street.
Is it more of an historical perspective? But preserve more of a preservation?
Yeah, the downtown New England look.
Yeah, do you want to preserve what Enfield's commercial look like?
Well.
Bourbon renewal is one.
Someone complains about Jake's being so square and boring. Do they not recall what was there?
Exactly. It was a square and boring motor store.
And then it didn't hold up very well and.
Actually, I asked, uh, just aside here, I had Paul Merzke, I wrote him and asked him about what he thought of design of that building. And he he came back to me with some architectural statements about the style of that design. And it actually is a recognized kind of uh
With with tipping the hat to the railroad.
Yeah, so and it it, gosh, you gotta, you gotta give Bergeron a lot of credit for, I mean, he puts a building up. It is a nice building.
Car wash is beautiful though. And the car wash is nice too.
And we get lucky sometimes, um, Clarissa King, I think, was, did the Copeland block building open? That could have been a horror show.
It was Paul Merzke who designed the the back stairway to look so authentic. Instead of um, the metal stairs just zigzagging up the back.
Then you have others who uh, put a stairway on a building and have no idea what they're doing. It was like looking horrible, but you know, I guess in terms of commercial buildings, um you're in the industrial zone. Do you even worry about it?
The industrial, no.
Probably not.
Not in our industrial zone, cause it's, nobody can see it.
I think we need some simple, straightforward design guidelines that are a talking point for someone when they say, well, what do you mean? And say, well, in this historical house, we prefer you didn't put jealousy windows in or sliding doors or.
Let me get again to.
That's not a light touch. That's not a light touch. That's not a light class of style.
Unless you went to preservation zoning. Uh, which I don't think the town would vote for. I mean, you can have the historic society and disparate folks adjust that to the developer. They can have that conversation, but I, I don't see that for in the zoning rates.
So the light touch would be saying have the addition be compatible with the building?
Well, even that is, you're still getting into form-based. I mean, once you get into how are you going to build your structure? That's very complicated. I'm born, I still want to stay in the lanes of setbacks, height restrictions, footprint size. You know, to a lot coverage. From your purpose to lot size, things along those lines. And a more tradition, to me, more traditional zoning.
Right, and it, those are things like coverage of lot has more to do with safety for your neighbors. Because if you're gonna put asphalt all around the the building and you're gonna have a full ninety percent of your lot covered, then you don't have any issues, but your neighbor does, cause all of his waters, all of your water is going like it's like. Or it's going directly, or downtown, or it's going directly into the river. Off of the asphalt, yes.
Right, and just, well, I mean, the fire code set the distance between structures unless it's built a certain way. But you can still, like you said, still have line with asphalt and is that what you, some areas that's probably okay. Other areas in town, that's not gonna be okay. That's sort of my feeling of that, I mean, I'm all in favor, I mean, reducing the setback requirements that we currently have for all the zones, I think, is definitely in line. And all all four setbacks. Sides and backs setbacks.
Would you make a distinction between uh, a setback on a public road versus a private road, or would you leave it?
It's it's the same purpose, it's just the legal status of the roads is all its difference.
Purpose for the twenty feet is so you got, you're not blocked by.
Well, twenty people on what?
From the road frontage, it's thirty.
Yeah, I mean, you need certain amount of space um for this plot, the snow to go and just the runoff buffer. Um, I mean, you look at some of those structures that were built and extended out pre-zoning.
Oh, there's a safety issue too, I mean. Flanders Street, there's an apartment, and if a car backs up from behind that house, he's on the road. Anybody coming down the road.
Yeah, but even just like on Main Street, the um, that woodworking shop. That that thing that sticks out was obviously added on at some point. And it's like right there. And then on Route four.
Drive, top drive, Ridge Hill. That house is got, is is on the road. The one that burned down was on the road.
So what do we do then with the one that burned down? And the landowner wants to rebuild on the same footprint? Do we tell him he can't?
There is a term limit on that. Right, if he came back, if someone came back immediately, they might be stuck.
It was abandoned.
It would never come to us.
Right, but it's good, the grandfathering is going to, it's it's probably take care of that issue.
However, with the right zoning, they will move the building back because it will be to their advantage. And the right zoning will make that hard, and therefore they'll do it. If you put a barrier up that makes it hard, then they won't do it. Yeah, we ran into that issue before where they wanted to move it, but.
And it made sense.
Everything except the zoning made sense.
They didn't want to go through the CBA, so they just rebuilt where it was.
We heard that tonight. They didn't want to go to, they don't want to go to ZVA. We heard it up on Stephen Street. They don't want to go to ZVA.
Does uh, Mr. Demers have the option to reverse, which is the main building, build himself a big retirement house? And divide the house in front into
Two ADUs?
Into three, so that there's eight hundred each.
Well, it's all speculation on what the builder, opponent wants to do, so. I mean, if we if we had to answer that question or attempted to answer that question with new zoning laws, I think we'd probably be in a position where we're trying to make it too complicated.
I have a question. Maybe it's too specific, but what's the argument against more than one building with housing on a, on a single lot? Why would we not allow that?
I, I don't know why it's like that.
Why would we not allow?
My, my opposition to that is strictly a financial one. For the town, the town collects gets more taxes on an individual lots for a building than two on one lot. Cause you have taxed by lot. So you're forced to have multiple lots that get taxed separately.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah, okay, that's fair. That's a, that's a fair fair statement. However, so if we if we continue that thought, like in, like in this, we have a nice example in front of us where they really can't subdivide it in a functional way because of the limited growth frontage. In that case, the town will get more tax money by allowing a second building. It it because, because you're absolutely correct. Two quarter acre lots, each with an individual house is a higher total value than a half acre lot with those same two houses on it. However, there are these other cases where you can't get those two quarter acre lots for other reasons.
But I don't think, but I'm not arguing zoning. I'm just saying that might have been, you know, what, that is one.
Are there other reasons that people can think of? Cause I can't really think of reasons why we wouldn't.
Well, the other one is when you run into ownership issues when they go to sell, someone goes to sell. You have two families, two hu- two primary structures, two fam- separate families. It may be related by blood. Oh, they may turn out to hate each other. Like, one goes to the kids and they hate each other. You know, all kinds of family, and then they go to sell and the banks have a horror show with it. Then they're coming in saying, I need to sub, I need to subdivide.
It's the same thing as I have a duplex that has two, two sides to it. If somebody doesn't get along with the other one, that ain't my problem.
But they're on the same lot though.
Yeah, but they are. They're owned by the same single person. They're not under, under different ownership.
No, but you, they have two structures under different ownership.
They're not under different ownership.
No, they will be. The lot, the land is one ownership, but buildings are separate ownership, well. No, there was been several.
But it isn't my problem.
I I realize it's not the town.
And it's not the town's problem, and it's not zoning's problem.
But isn't he talking about condo, basically condo?
No, I'm just talking about two different.
Separate primary structures. On one lot, and the lot is owned by one person. The two structures are owned by
Him and his kid.
Cause you can't do that.
Why not?
Unless you did condo. The ownership has to be the same.
Well, maybe, maybe one of the structures owned by, owns the land and the other house is owned, you're probably.
It has to be needed to one entity.
You're probably talking about
Unless you do condos.
Situations that happened way back.
Exactly.
Still here with us. Probably will happen in the future because banks aren't gonna give you a.
They're not gonna let you do it if you don't own the land. Unless it's condos, cause condos, if you look at Lakeview condos, and maybe, that is as close as we get to workforce housing in this town. Except for the mobile home parks or manufactured home parks. Those were, I mean, up until about four or five years ago, eighty thousand dollars. Ownership of a two-bedroom condo. Unfortunately, they've gone through the roof. Now they're two hundred and fifty thousand.
Another reason why it's put on the books.
Same thing up on Anderson Hill, the Ford, the force, the two foursomes. They're going for a quarter of a million a piece, each of those, each of those forces, each of the individual pieces.
Well, um, it's kind of that, that Chester's fence game we're playing, right? You don't take a fence down until you figure out why it was put there in the first place. In this case, though, what you said about how zoning ordinance came to be, I I questioned all of it. Zero-based budgeting, if you will, you know, proved to us why we really need this.
I think you're on the right track. I think, you know, from the history is, I mean, I remember back in the eighties, everybody was freaking out, the growth. I remember Hartford was proposing a growth moratorium. No more growth. Stop growth. Yeah, and the schools were gonna run out of control with enrollment.
Population chart for the upper reality in the seventies, eighties, it went and that's when a lot of the towns said we need to do something and zoning was the issue, is what they decided to do. Um, because things were just popping up.
Plato, they wanted to stop mobile homes. That's what they wanted to do. Literally, they actually passed a law that was stop mobile homes. And that got challenged with the Supreme Court. Supreme Court said you can't do that. But you could create zones for mobile homes. There's only places, and that's what we did. We said, okay, you can have it here, but you can't have it over here, you know?
We got to a hundred and P, that was it. And unless some burned down or left, you couldn't put it, we we had a moratorium on them.
And they, and towns always put them close to the town line. Yes, the zones.
Organically, it isn't that it was put there.
Right, but the zoning that we implemented was in response to that, what happened. That's the same way it was in Plainfield. This was like, oh my god, we gotta stop this. How do we stop it? And that's what I was talking about earlier. It was, it was like, we can't let poor people come into our town. We gotta keep them out, you know? And uh, so it's sort of racist, you know?
What if we, what if we said we got no zoning at all? And asked ourselves what, what sort of issues might come up under that scenario that we wanna make sure we did prohibit it.
Setbacks for sure.
Uh, well, in some acts, and incompatible, incompatible uses next to each other.
The pig farm next to the residence.
And when Baccastill was put in, I was getting manure from the guy that lived across the street from him. Dave in the Hill, I think was, he called himself, he was a trader type of thing, and I would buy stuff.
Dave Johnson? His wife was the postmaster.
And but anyways, when Parkus, Parkustial was being built there, he was complaining to the town that he didn't like the trucks going going in there and backing up and all the banging, banging from manufacturing of the steel. Cause he was right across from the street from it. I'm looking, it's like, it's Canaan. You can, you have nothing you can do about it. And he didn't want zone. He was, he wanted to live in Canaan because it had no zoning. Until there's something went next to it.
Well, that's it.
And I read this in the paper all the time when these towns, when something's being proposed, in towns with no zoning, all of a sudden, everybody's up and arms.
An indism. That's not enough to.
You can, you can appreciate that. Puts a a race car shop next door, they're gonna be testing engines or something. The fire range that was, the gun range that was, the artillery range that was being proposed in Canaan ten years ago. You think it'd be possible?
On May Street Extension, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, I know. For us to have one zone with a few things that we don't wanna have happen there. I mean, how, how?
In most, in most cases, it's setting up commercial zones. And the rest is all residential. And the only third piece is a conservation district, but that's about it. I mean, you could do that.
The only commercial area we have, um, uh, on the, on eighty nine.
This one industrial, yeah.
Which is basically trucking depot.
And if you build a house there, that's your own risk.
That's your own risk, cause you know what it is and it's built like that. Yeah.
That's just like, there's a big farm existing and you build your house next door to it. You live with it.
You herd the pigs and you smell the pigs when you build your house. It's like there's a gravel pit next to you on the bog road when you build your house. The gravel pit is there.
It's not like we're trying to encourage. Heavy manufacturing anyplace other than that. Or is there a demand for that sort of activity?
Well, not today, but you know.
Someone might propose in the future, want to do it. So outside of commercial, industrial and sort of high noise. Activity, pig farms. You, you kinda end up with a, with a residential zone, say it's the entire town except for the industrial area. Then we, we already sort of identified, the lakes are a little special case. I guess what I'm trying to get around to is, is there a real need to have minimum lot sizes? Kinda going out to the backyard.
Not from my standpoint.
There are three or five or one, whatever.
I don't, yeah. And that becomes. You know, I'm not telling you, you can't have an R five. I'm just saying, you, you can't make me have an R five, you know? I don't, I shouldn't have to have five acres in order to build my house.
Thank you for the resistance with people that are currently living in the rural areas. They thought some major development could happen right next to them. When they thought they were living in a rural, they bought, it's the same thing, they were buying into an area that's very rural. And all of a sudden, all the trees got cut down and there's ten homes pop up right next on top of them.
Well, third and R five, it's not popped up on top of them.
If there was no. Right, if there was no R five. If it was. Happen one acre because you need water septic. You know, on, on large water septic, one acre, I think is the DES sort of. Hat offer. By what they recommend anyways. That's something we get, that is something we gotta talk to them. Whoever the zoning guy. Well, the consultants. Has what is onsite water septic. What is the smallest they recommend going to for new lots? And is there even a minimum size recommendation? Is that they soil, probably is on soils. Well, there's a way you can go, but you can also, but I do think they have, just without going by soil based. Just from the well setbacks, structure, just, it's just some basic number. That just for things to fit. Without running into issues.
At some extent, some of those things, you don't even need to, it's a Tim's point, you don't need to specify lot size. It's that somebody would have to have, it'd have to meet all those rules. The one thing you might wanna consider to keep it, if there's a growing, is like, maybe your road frontage is actually where you limit the number of lots. The fact, like, like your lot density. You know, if you, if you want a super rural, you, it's a thousand feet of road frontage. You know, or if you want a super densey, twenty five feet, you know?
Right, I mean, that is.
Right, that effectively does it without requiring somebody to have exactly, you know, a three acre depth. Based on their frontage.
Yeah, so, and that also allows people to. We had a party in here last winter, I think, and wanted to take a little bit of one lot and add it to theirs. Neither one was conforming and who cares?
And it all, and it all made sense. Or like the way Brad had to do, when he wanted, you, you're the one, you wanted to change your lot with your neighbor, right?
Yeah, I bought twenty feet.
Right, cause there was a brook. Well, I've been using this land, I'm, I didn't even know it wasn't.
Um, a little, a little homework for you guys. Um, when I was on, um, a field trip. Associated with that planners conference a couple of weeks back, we went to Dover. And we did a tour, they were talking about, they have a program down there called TDR, it's Transfer of Development Rights. And what is, is very interesting, and you guys will, I, I, I can print you out, they have a really neat little fact sheet. But what it is, is basically it gives the planning board a lot of power and the developer some options with regard to higher density.
Mitigation.
And people can anti in, they actually pay for increase in density. And they also, there's also bonuses for if you went with affordable or rent control, those kind of things. Um, and so what they're doing is, the, the, the purpose of the program is, they take money. In exchange for people to get more density. You guys can waive, um, uh, density, frontage setbacks, those three things. And what's happened in Dover is that housing has exploded. They're building thousands of units of housing in Dover. So obviously, CCOs and so forth. But they're also getting all this money in their conservation fund. They got two million dollars in this fund. Where the Conservation Commission goes out and tries to identify highly sensitive areas for protection. So they look at it as a trade off, you know, we're getting, obviously, developable land is getting developed harder, you know, it's getting more housing, it's getting more. Density, but there also is a sort of a trade off that you're finding, you know, if there's. Land next to mud pond that's highly sensitive, that should somebody buy it, the town should buy it and protect it, right? And that's what they're doing, and so you're getting places in the downtown of Dover. That's the place where the tiny home development is, forty four units on four acres.
You mentioned this before, and I don't know if I've said it at the time, but. It would take a lot of persuasion to get me to buy into this. Just the complication of it, for Enfield, we don't have the town staff. And then I used to, if it's money just going into a fund. You need a willing seller of the land you wanna buy.
Well, and even, even. The land that you consider sensitive. In most cases, it's not developable.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
I, I looked at it when I was there, and I was like, well, it's certainly working in terms of that.
I'm sure it's working in.
But they are concerned because now the conservation fund is up to two hundred, two million dollars.
And they can use it any place they want to. Control of the Conservation Commission.
Possibly, but there, there could be just a, a special fund that's.
Right, it could be, yeah.
Operated by, yeah, but you still need, for, for that type of fund to work, you still need land with a willing seller. So, and I, I think in a town like Enfield. You probably wanna encourage the density. To be not three miles out blocking. Right, right, and it has to be where the town wants the density, not when the developer feels like building. So we, so we do have to essentially have some. Defined areas, zones, where, where we allow. Max density and can give developers bonuses and all that kind of, um. Non-traditional or innovative land use incentivization. But we, we need to be pretty specific in our thinking as to where we wanna do that, cause I don't see that happening. In the entire town that's not defined as commercial.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm thinking. I'm thinking it almost takes care of itself in the village. You got town water and sewer. That helps define what the defen- density can be. If you had no minimum lot sizes in that district. Um, it's, it's, it's purely a. Determined by the lot and, and the utilities that are available to it and the setbacks, that sort of. Take off all the other regulations about that and you'll see some interesting things happen and hopefully, uh. Get some, get some, uh, projects going.
You might see some cluster developments that are.
You could, they could, but if, um. If I'm out on four A, oh, let's say down towards, uh, head and toe, past, um.
The old Blue Ox Farm?
Yeah, let's, we'll just take the old Blue Ox. And I think there's a flood issue there, but, um, anyway. If a developer wanted to go in there and, and put a new, uh, another Lakeview condo complex in. Or a mobile home park, let's say that, uh, perhaps the density was gonna be like a mobile home park, like Currier's. Except it was gonna be, um, small retirement cottages. Whatever. I think there's every incentive in the world for that developer to, to put those things as small a footprint as possible. Uh, I don't personally care how many fits on there, as long as it, it, it fits environmentally with the lot. The septic works, there's, there's adequate water supply, et cetera. Uh, now the fact that it's a mile and a half from the center of town, or two miles, I mean, the town's only six miles square for Pete's sake. Is it really that much of a, a, a problem for town services? We're not very big. So, um. I guess what I'm saying is, is that, I think in a lot of, most cases, this is sort of gonna take care of itself, disorganizing. And I would rather than us having, planning out a really detailed, uh. Plan for the town and where things are gonna go and what you can do here and what you can't do there, that. When you involve more people in that, um, proposal and solution. Exploring process by the fact that there's so many people out here scratching their heads over what am I gonna, what do I wanna do with my property? Where do I wanna invest money? And all of those. Combined are a lot bigger than, than this small board here in, in, in town that we, we can't anticipate all this stuff. Didn't really define anything, but, uh.
I think, I think you kinda did.
You did.
No, I'll summarize what I heard, you can correct me. We have basically four areas that are sort of already defined. They have the eighty nine industrial. That's different. We have around the lakes. We have the village with water and sewer, and we have everywhere else.
Conservation areas.
So, and, but other than those sort of four exceptions, everything else is sort of everything else.
It's residential, yeah.
And you got a few, you look up there, you got. You got a few large lots over a hundred acres. Not many. And a lot of those, you, you couldn't build on anywhere. Wanna go that far, but?
Well, they're. It'll be expensive.
It'll be expensive to, to do.
It'll be expensive. But it's a matter of when does the cost justify, you know, the, the, the value, the payback justify the upfront cost? I mean, it's gonna be that balance of a developer.
Well, yeah, uh, but it, back to, back to Tim's point. If you've got a hundred acres that are closer to town, that's more developable than a hundred acres further out. Because he's gotta, he's also gotta fill, if he's gonna put a hundred. Homes way out on Lock Haven, he's gotta fill that hundred, he's gotta fill those hundred homes.
He's counting his beans before he puts his.
Exactly, yeah.
Standing in front of two things, one, the road frontage, which also ties in with the private roads. I wear that idea.
I, and I like that consultant to, to address that issue. What, what, how does road frontage come? Play into the development of a, of an area? What can that do that is an unintended consequence and, and then yet how does it help? Well, I think one of the, which I think is gonna come out when we start having the public hearings. Is that the people that are living in the more rural areas.
Say it that way.
I, you were, exactly, yes. Like, probably seventy five percent of the people that live in town moved here from somewhere else. I mean, there's very few people that were born here and still live here. Um, is my just sort of sense. I mean, they may be here for twenty, thirty, forty years. But they still moved here from somewhere else. And they move, moved to Enfields or the Upper Valley and moved to the rural part of town, cause that's what they liked. I mean, they had options to buy anywhere. They chose there. Cause that's what they wanted. That's what they wanna look out the window and see. So I think that it will be coming, coming out, I believe, and when we start hearing a public hearings.
You may be right about that.
I mean, there's several articles I've been reading about these larger developments, you know, for, you know, Southern New Hampshire. Uh, where they're proposing these multi, uh, pyramid complexes. And the neighbors are screaming, all the buddies, saying, we don't like it, it's too big.
I know.
First comment out of the mouth is like, it's too big. Doesn't fit the neighborhood.
Time, they want affordable housing. And they don't have a problem if it's built half a mile from.
No, no, it's, it's their neighborhood, right. They don't want it in their neighborhood.
And that's how zoning came about.
But, but I think the road frontage is one. Good way of very defined. Keep having, keeping that look, there's no formula, it's just a, a, a length. And then if they wanna build the road that goes in. Off of the main road, then, okay, you only see twenty feet of road going in.
Exactly.
Now, I do have an interest in, I think the wildlife corridors and habitat. But that, I think that's in the master plan and it should be respected.
And that could be in the site plan too. You know, saying that if you're going to, you've gotta, you've gotta, if you're taking a fifty acre lot. Then you've gotta put in wildlife corridors. That are, that you know are. Already white wildlife corridors, which most of the ones on Lock Haven Road are.
So this would, this would be a general question to the consultant, is how, how do you, how do you preserve a large lot? And yet allow for the creation of as, of as much housing as the developer. Wants and feels like he can. Market. You know, and the land can support, adequately support. And yet still. Is there?
What, what are you trying to preserve? What factors are you trying to?
What, what are you trying to preserve? What factors are you trying to preserve?
The, as, as much contiguous natural area as possible.
That's a good question to ask, but the um. The potential one uh for four, to reform Maple Street is a good example where. If you allow for three large buildings, you end up consuming much less of the land. Than if you have a hundred, it's, you know, single family homes. Like that's one scenario.
But they've already clear cut it for six buildings. Clear cut.
We, we saw a very noticeable change.
But that, that gets back to the principal building thing also.
Right, but I'm just, just as an example, you know, the, the number, the amount of land used. The, the other, the other potential thing would be to encourage it to be close to the road. Like any potential building to be close to the road. Cause then you're not cutting into the, the bag. I don't know if that's practical.
Well, I.
You know.
Think it is. I mean, you look at the Lakeview property. Does that show up there? You know, how much of their property is actually occupied by buildings and parking lots?
Yeah, they've got a twenty-five acres out back that's basically not at all. It's on steep slope and they put, that's where the new septic, they were gonna put the new septic in when they, before they decided to hook up.
You know, if there's a way to nail that down permanently also. That would be another part of that is. Yes, okay, you did your twenty-four cottages or townhomes on this corner of the lot. And you didn't wanna build back there because it's too expensive and the market won't, you know, but how do we, is there a way to?
Conservation easement on the, the rest of the property?
Well, I mean, by, uh, it's sort of like, if it's X amount of lots, then you, then the regs say it has to be clustered. Um, in some fashion and you get your, and then you get your reduced setback requirements. Type of thing, it's just built in that, you know, we're not gonna require a twenty foot of. Whatever twenty-five foot building setbacks, it's gotta be a, a five foot or a ten foot, whatever the fire codes. Uh, minimum required type of thing. I mean, you don't have to be, or, or you do the, you know, if you want, that's based on if you want individual homes. You know, if you, if they're develop, I mean, that's all based on developers' format too. If they do individual homes versus apartments. Um, I think developers, I don't know if they do both or one, only one, only the other. I don't know what it is.
There are mixed.
There's some mixed at Lakeview, there's certain mixed at Shaker Village.
I mean, what is the density at Shaker Village? I mean, that's a good.
Yeah, there's uh, there's very few. There's very few that even quarter acre.
Do they? They must, what do they do for, I know they have well.
They're on water and sewer. Well, they're hooked up to our well sewer now.
They're hooked up to sewer now.
What did they, what, what they do prior?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they didn't build the development till that sewer system.
Yeah, they had sewer when they, when they started.
Built it.
And they have their own, they have their own village water.
Yeah, I know they have water because it was always discussing connecting, tying up, having a joint.
Prior to them, prior to the developer buying it, whatever purposes they had, they had septic systems scattered all over the place. And that goes way back into the seventies. And probably some parts went right out of the lake too.
That's where the rest of the town went, so.
Yeah, 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 it wasn't until the eighties. And town went to sewer, so.
So let, let me kinda pick up on something that Tim said about half an hour ago, I think. Um, we're talking about commercial being defined. And everything else being residential. And my question becomes, um. How do we handle home-based businesses? And as an example, I wanna bring up. Something that I think you told me about, or it may, it may have been some other source, but. My understanding is there was a guy on your street. Who was, I think, selling bait. And the neighbors were not particularly happy about it, cause there was a lot of in and out traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So do we then have to define. Some level of commercial activity below which it's a home business and it's allowed. And above which it's commercial and it's not allowed? Just something to think about.
They're still selling bait.
Yeah, I don't really know the history of that, cause it never bothered me and I live right across the street from him. And sometimes I wonder if, if neighbors just don't get all flustered because he's breaking the rules. It's not the rule they're concerned about, it's the fact he's breaking it. I, they probably care less if there was no rule. But just because he's breaking it.
And actually, we, I think we've got him into compliance now. Yeah, they were doing it in an accessory building. They've now moved it all inside the house.
Well, it is a home, I mean, it is a home business.
But without getting to details on that one, to your point, um Auto Body Shop wants to go in and some guy's garage next to you. He wants to work from home.
Well, the guy on Shaker. Oh, oh, whatever they was. You know, where, where do we, you know, we're, we're gonna have to draw some line somewhere.
Sure, and that, and that may be one of those that say you gotta at least have a site plan review or some, some of that. Uh, or maybe just prohibited.
But with, but I think what David's getting at is. When does it become, stop being considered a home business that nobody even knows is exist except for the people that service. Use it, a few people that use it versus an all day, an event. Uh, with multiple, so it's either, I mean, the consultant hopefully has some answers for this one, but I think either number of employees. Soon as you get in over X amount of employees, stop being home business. Um, unless it's family runs, you know, strictly sons and daughters are being paid to sit there at the counter. Um, or the number of vehicles, vehicle trips. Now residences, residential, when they do the count, they go, I think, ten vehicles per day is the. Now, the standard that's used on, for road trips on a housing developments. So that's the kind of, so that's the minimum. You're going over that. Then, then how much over that, does it step over the line from home business to, yeah, commercial business?
Yeah, and you know, if, if you've got a family business and mom and pop live in the house. And there are three kids, are adults, they have to drive in every day. And in scenario A, that's all that you've got. You know, mom, pop and three kids plus their spouses, okay? They're doing office work, they're selling insurance or processing claims, whatever.
Right, and that's where I guess it's a few, number of vehicle trips showing up, constantly showing up.
This will be a problem.
If they're all parked on the lot, it's not a problem. The cars are spilling out onto the street. Then it becomes, starts being a problem.
That, I would view we should encourage work from home as much as possible.
Oh, I, I agree.
And, and, and so when I think about it, I think, okay, so what conflicts, we hear about number of trips. I question whether that's really a problem. Um, noise is certainly. Noise, um, some people feel that auto body shops look like junkyards even when they don't.
It's the nature of the business, yeah.
I know plenty of people have had an issue with truck traffic at night.
Contractors yard, and he's got. piles of stones.
So I mean, like, but I think of it in terms of like, when are you gonna have a conflict? I don't think we wanna get into, like, nobody's gonna complain about the accountant. Or we don't wanna like, oh, you know, make it so that one, if you have these businesses, you're allowed, if you, you know, do these other things. If you're an electrical contractor, you can't. I don't want to have zoning making that choice for people.
Jamie Martin's been my neighbor for thirty years. And there's no issue. He's got a half a dozen trucks, the guys come in at six, seven in the morning, they drive out, they come back at the end of the day. Wife had a salon underneath the house, no problem. It was a home, you know, it's home business.
I can tell you historically, you know, uh, Jim has taught me and, and now that I'm the administrator. It is that sort of, if you're, if you're parking and you're coming and going. No problem. But once it starts to cross over that line, when they're doing stuff onsite, like processing, like backup alarms of a tractor or a truck. And they're actually like. Loading sand and then you start to say, well, the neighbors are gonna be upset. We had one over on four A, Jim told me about years ago. Where it did start to escalate that they were doing more than the home-based occupation. And it does, it, it is, that, that's in the administrator's purview to say, but you've gone beyond home occupation now.
So, yeah, I, I think we're gonna have to have a section. That addresses those issues and come up with some compromise. It's about as good as it'll ever be as a compromise.
Right, it's, and, and it doesn't change the zone. It's, so it's townwide. It's still. If it's not in the commercial district, then it's, if, then there's a maximum what the home business can be.
Well, we have a, an expert in the zoning that's gonna be working with us. So it would be really interesting to hear his response to some of these.
And what other towns have done.
The Route Four District that we've got, um, I, I think I've heard. Really accomplished. Seems like that whole section could be drastically simplified.
I mean, we, we, I think we've got to look at all of Route Four from Lebanon to Canaan. As a commercial, hopefully not strip development, strip development. Because that's what it is. And that's where you have an awful lot of vehicular traffic every day. And that's the natural place to have commercial development. I think we're gonna have to decide, you know, how far from Route Four does that commercial zone extend? And, you know, that's open for debate, but I think, you know, the entire stretch is gonna have to.
Currently, doesn't it stretch three hundred feet on each side?
Yeah, but, well, yeah, as form, form-based, it was three hundred feet back where you could do apartments. What they have filed with a lot of that land is it's not developable anyways, cause it's big chunk of it's in the wellhead protection. And you hit the Canaan line pretty quick. On four A, you hit it pretty quick. It doesn't go back that far before you're in Canaan.
But you do have a lot of residential. Which.
Pre-existing, right.
Pre, pre-existing, but should it stay that way or should commercial? You know, new, new, should new commercial.
Be allowed to be there?
I'd be inclined to say that it, it, it's, it's zone commercial, whatever that means. And if you wanna put a home there, that's up to you.
That's up to you. You could still put a home there.
In terms of, of providing some, uh, some form of uh protection or maintenance of status quo. For people who already have put homes there and might not be very happy with. A commercial type of operation next door or on the lot or back of them or whatever.
Where?
Yeah, I don't know what you're, what you're thinking.
Maybe there isn't.
If you're going from the Lebanon line, yeah, so I wouldn't go from the Lebanon, I would split Route Four from Lebanon. To High May Street, um.
High Street, yeah. Well, even.
I would go to Hughes Park intersection. Um, get past the village school. Well, that would be one type of commercial, but then from then on, you could be more, and more. On the upper end of commercial.
There's, there's no spots for commercial there from the Lebanon line really to the Enfield Garage.
Oh, I mean, David's saying the whole Route Four commercial, that's why I'm saying it's.
I, I trained the real estate people not to call me. The field across from my house. I've had everything from banks to hotels.
Hotel, that'd be nice.
One of the problems is when you enter Enfield from Lebanon, there's very little light available on the right-hand side of the road. All the way to Canaan, where you could put a, a market. Jakes would've been better off on the other side of the road. Got the easy in and out when you're on your way home.
It's kind of like Family Dollar and Dunkin' Donuts should've been flipped, because people come from Canaan and need to go to Dunkin' Donuts. Where you're going home, you'd be going to Family Dollar.
So, uh, I mean, I, I think you, you just, you just make it commercial and put whatever. Definition around that you want and, and it would, to me, it would probably start. Perhaps as you pitch over the top of Dry Ridge Hill, that's Route Four. Everything on the other side of the Lebanon side of the hill is, is, is different, you know, it's very different.
There, there's no space to build anything.
You start to get to the sewer.
Space to have.
Water and sewer at the bottom of that hill, right, where Flanders Street connects. Uh, you would, I mean, you would want the new car wash and. Energy you're importing, I don't know.
The old Enfield garage.
The old Enfield garage.
That, that, that should be part of Route Four.
And it worked out that the, the car wash went in what was commercial already, did it all?
Yeah, right.
Not sure we need two car washes in Enfield, but that's a different discussion. Yeah, well, Tony has us do pizza anymore.
Well, we used to have more car lots per mile than any other town. Well, until everything moved out to Ford River. Have we got this thing licked?
I think we've had to a point where we could stop.
I, I think we beat it, beat it to death for tonight. Um, let me see, what's next? Uh, rules of procedure. If we have them, we could sign them.
Well, we only need one copy, so.
You got copies?
No, no, I didn't.
I do.
Oh, actually, actually, I do.
Any changes?
I didn't make any changes.
I had questions, but in an effort of time, I'm not gonna ask them. No, we don't.
Just, just in, if we're not gonna do it tonight, can we remove rules of procedure ahead of zoning ordinance in ten thousand feet?
I have a clean, like, last page.
I don't trust your clean copies. I don't trust your clean copies. Oh, you're just gonna give us a signature page, that would even work better.
That's all he needs for the file.
Baby, let's, I, I have one as well.
Okay, I, I, I'll go with Brad's. I mean, it's dated on the bottom.
Yeah, but you're known to make changes in the base and then just give us the. Just give us the.
Okay, let's, uh, let's put rules of procedure first for our next meeting.
Sounds good. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Go ahead, you got it.
All right, motion have been made and seconded, uh, Brad made it and who seconded it, all right? All in favor of adjourning? I opposed abstention.
I am opposed, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, this is the first time that I've ever had anybody oppose a motion to adjourn.
Twenty-one.
At eight twenty-one, or at any other town.
Yeah, the reason is.